Okay, all right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Village of Armont Board of Trustees meeting via Zoom, January 3rd, 2021. I'll call the meeting to order and would everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Please be seated. Sharon, if you could do a roll call, please.
Sorry, Mayor Bubel.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Downey.
Present.
Present.
Trustee Moses.
Present.
Trustee Pesante.
Present.
Okay. At this point, if we could move into public comment, which is limited to three minutes per speaker. Sharon, if you could just give your instructions as usual, please.
Sure, if you would like to speak, you can press the raise your hand button on the bottom right part of your screen, and I will unmute you. As the mayor said, you have three minutes to speak. Melissa Rosenblum, please state your name and address for the record.
Could someone possibly give an explanation and clearly know what we're talking about before my three minutes starts?
This is public comment. If you have something to say, you have three minutes to speak now.
No, isn't there a subject matter that we're talking about?
Agenda, correct?
Correct.
Right, so is there something that's coming for a vote today?
There are resolutions listed in tonight's agenda.
Yeah, it would be nice if you listed and talked about those resolutions first before we spoke. Mention them. Just to be clear, so we all understand.
Okay, there was a, there was a Board of Trustees' agenda sent out on the website, sir?
Yes, I understand that, but you know, a few words extra wouldn't hurt, Mayor. You know, we're all not necessarily experts or novices about how and what are being done. I think a clear position from you should clarify things for the public to know what the actual result that you're trying to accomplish.
All right, so I appreciate your comment on public comment. Would you like to comment tonight? And would you like us to start your three minutes?
I would like to have my comment later. I wanted to hear a little bit more about what is up for discussion.
Okay, okay, so, public comment is just that. It is public comment is your chance to speak on subject matter that you would like to. It's not a question and answer forum. It is a public comment forum.
Okay, so I'd like to table my public comments until later. Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Trustee Pesante.
Can you just briefly, just explain briefly what needs discussed? I mean, some people don't have access.
Okay, Trustee Pesante, you have a packet in front of you. We will discuss the items going forward. I mean, there is an agenda, I mean, that's in front.
No, I understand that, but some people to the internet. Some people can't get to read these.
Okay.
The same way, the same way the people get the link.
Right, that wouldn't, that wouldn't be public, that wouldn't be public comment. That would be as we go through the resolution, everything gets explained, talked about and discussed.
Oh, yes.
So I don't know what you're asking, Trustee Pesante, but that's not the way we run, we run the meeting.
All right, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, when I'm speaking to you, please don't have anyone interrupt. That's very rude.
All right, we should, especially with being on a Zoom format, we should keep it to a one-on-one. But that's not the way we've conducted our meetings, and we've been doing this for quite a while.
Notice that, thank you.
Sharon, is there anyone else who would like to comment?
Yes, Jacob, please state your name and address for the record.
Scott.
Hello, starting now, you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Say your name and address for the record.
Jacob Reichberg, 8 A.R. Court. First of all, I would like to thank the board and especially Sharon for working on, to get on the night, tonight's agenda, the streetlights that's been a concern for our neighborhood, Dawn and Air Court. We've got it in no time by all the neighbors to sign those, all the forms that was needed because everybody is requesting them, but it's very interesting that the whole, the whole dawn from twinkle to twinkle has zero lights. I don't know why that was in the past. So I don't know, this signing the documents was necessary, but we've got it done. So appreciate it and appreciate the board for getting it done in a matter of time. Now, something of the record is that, that's not on tonight's agenda. Can that be discussed, or that's a different matter?
Yes.
Okay, so we have Dawn, Corner Heather. If one of the trustees or anybody on the board would be able to pass by, when you're coming from Dawn Lane to Heather, there's a stop sign over there. There's buses coming, buses going, cars going. You, in order to, you stop by the stop sign, and then you need to stick out minimum half of your car in order to see what's going, if somebody's coming from the direction from Cherry Lane, because there's a big bushes and stuff like that. I would appreciate if somebody can pass by there and come up with the resolution of what can be done over there, maybe that trees to come down or those bushes from a neighbor, because you literally can't see cars coming and going.
And that, and sir, just so I'm clear, I said, when you're coming to Heather and you're going, when you're looking down Cherry Lane?
You want, you're coming on Dawn Lane, Corner Heather, and you want to look, let's say if you want to make a right or a left, you need to check your left side, cars coming from Cherry Lane.
Right.
Visibility over there.
So it's like a visual obstruction with the foliage and stuff, correct? Is that what you're saying?
A lot of bushes coming out literally into the road, yes.
I mean, I can, I will call the county, because it's a county road, and tell them that it is, we have a visual obstruction there. And, you know, and we could find, I'll follow up with Sharon and the mayor and the board. And, and they should go out and take care of it. That's what they usually do.
Thank you, guys, you guys are the best.
Thank you.
Thank you. Linda Engler, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Linda Engler. I live at 8 Kelly Court in Armont, obviously. I know you typically don't answer questions, but I have some questions and concerns about the garbage contract. Hoping that if you don't answer the questions at some point during the meeting tonight, that you will take this information and maybe put out some communication to the village. We know there's a new garbage contract. I've checked the village website, the Facebook page and Instagram, and there's no update for residents about what's happening with the garbage contract. In fact, the village website still has all the same information that it always has for years with weekly bulk pickup and instructing residents not to put their cans at the curb. So I think there is a need for the village to communicate directly with residents and let them know about any upcoming changes. And also, just to let us know what's happening, we are aware that there, that there is an issue with the contract. The minutes from the previous meeting that you're going to be voting on later during this meeting, show a resolution to contract directly with, I think it's Carlo Minuto for January 2022. So one of my questions is whether the village is also paying Rockland Green for that same service? And if so, why are we paying twice for the same service? If we are, why not just contract with the, with the trash comp, the trash company to just add on the services that weren't part of the original contract? Like adding in the bulk pickup until you're able to communicate a new schedule to us for our side yard pickup? Now, the other issue is that we've already received our bill from the town, and we are paying, if our town bill, we're paying the town, each resident, for 12 months of pickup. So if the village is paying also directly to the company, how is that going to get resolved? And have you resolved anything with the town for them to return the money for January to you? So you can pay Carlo Minuto directly? Also, if there is going to be a change in terms of bulk pickup, and I don't know if this is the case or not, but if we're going to be going from weekly to bi-weekly every other week, there is a need for you to communicate the new schedule to each and every resident of this village, including our seniors who may not get email, may not be on social media. I just see, perceive a nightmare of people not knowing when bulk pickup is going to be, and we're now hitting snow season. So to have bulk garbage items out on the street when there needs to be snow plowing really sounds concerning to me. And just finally, I noticed one thing you are going to be voting on later this meeting is to stop having the board workshops and only meet once a month. And that's concerning to me, given some of the issues with the garbage contract. I almost feel like if, if a workshop had been spent really carefully going through this contract and identifying any issues and a plan to address them, that we might not be having some of the issues that.
Your time is up, thank you for your comment. Melanie's iPad, please state your name and address for the record.
Melanie Phillips, 217 Cherry Lane, Tallman. I agree with the lady that just spoke, everything she was saying is exactly what I wanted to say. And I'm, I'm also wondering when we are going to be having in-person meetings again? Because I feel that even though you're listening to us, there's not the same kind of communication when you're in person as opposed to on the Zoom. Zoom is very impersonal, and I understand with COVID, I understand all of that. But I would hope in the near future, we would be able to meet and voice our opinions, our concerns in a public meeting. I also was curious as to why there's not going to be any more workshops. I feel that it's very important to have discussions, and I don't feel there's a lot of discussion going on at this point. And I'm also concerned with the amount of money that's being spent. I feel that with the budget, it's not included, a lot of the things that are being, wanting to be purchased. And I was wondering if the fire inspector, why he needs, if he's a full-time person. I understand why he would need a truck, a vehicle. I'm also wondering if he's going to be allowed to take that home? Or if it just stays, he parks it at the village hall after work hours? I don't feel that it should be a personal vehicle, and there's no way to control that if it's left, if it leaves the, the facility after hours. They can do whatever they want, and I don't feel it should be used as a personal vehicle. And also, is it really warranted? There's an awful lot of money that you have proposed to be using that is not budgeted, as far as I could see. And I just, I think you're spending an awful lot of money that is not budgeted. You're already over the budget for 2021. And we don't want, or I don't want you to use up all of our reserves, because then we have nothing to fall back on when there is an emergency. And I don't think a lot of these things that you're proposing to purchase furniture and trucks and the other things, accepting proposals for security cameras, this is a tremendous amount of money. And as far as I could see, it was not in the budget. So already you're adding more to the, I believe it's $500,000 that you're over from 2021. And we're not a rich community, and I feel that you're not using our money in the, in the, in the best way that could be used. Thank you.
Thank you. Danielle Meehan, please state your name and address for the record.
Danielle Meehan, 18 Ackerman Avenue, in the village. Um, perhaps about a month ago, I had asked a question if the recycling income revenue, I guess is the best word. If, once a village goes to Rockland Green, will the village still be getting that recycling revenue? Which was in the final budget, $27,000. Did anybody follow up on that? Okay, well, I will say I followed up on it. I guess all of you guys are too busy. We will not be getting that money, and it needs to be removed from the budget. So the budget that was filed with the state of New York is inaccurate. It's very troubling, all right? And I hope one of you finds the time to get in touch with the attorney, excuse me, not the attorney, the accountant, and fix that error. Two days last week, Monday and Tuesday, nobody was answering the phone at village hall. It stated that village hall was open, but nobody was answering the phone. I think that's really troubling. We've got a lot of very well-paid employees, and I, you know, you guys gave over $120,000 worth of raises. Somebody needs to be covering the phones. I don't know whose responsibility that is. Mr. Bubel, I believe you are ultimately responsible for what goes on in village hall. So I don't know if you look at that schedule, but perhaps you need to spend some time doing that. Um, I would like to know if any of you have any thoughts on how much money that you have spent, over half a million dollars more than last year? The 2022 budget, when you factor in garbage removal? These are our taxes that you're burning through. Are you trying to bankrupt the village? Any of you have any thoughts on that? A resident sent an email to me that Mr. Downey had rescinded his resignation as village liaison. I believe that had been tabled to this week. Is this accurate?
Yes.
Okay. I think that was, then I think procedurally, that resignation, that was supposed to be on this week. I sent an email, none of you had the courtesy to get back to me. Mr. Moses, in the future, if you have something to say to me, don't talk to me through webinar. If you want my cellphone, your colleagues have it, or send an email to me.
Thirty more seconds.
You guys have a great night, thanks so much.
You too, be well.
Thank you. Lehar, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, this is Lehar Eng for Young Court. I have a question regarding the garbage collections. Like everybody's saying before, if the budget was, it was, the, the pie was not budgeted in. So we should consider, look at how we could pay for all this expense that we overbudgeted. And the other thing is, I see there's expense for the security, the furniture, and all those things that, that we need to be spent this year, which is not in budget. If this is necessary to have what is expensive to spend it, which we don't have? And what is thing that you add on now, the lighting on the street and all those things? Those are more that we paying for. We should be, we never pay for the, the street for the light for most of the community. Now we have add on the lights and on the street now, what those other expenses that we add on? Who's paying for all this? Is this on the budget that we have to put it on? If more streetlights put it on, that means we go have, pay for the more the bills. And who's pay for all these things?
Do you have any further comment?
No.
Thank you. Lori Di Francesco, please state your name and address. Lori says, you're using an older version of Zoom. Lori, I cannot unmute you. It says you need to update your Zoom, and then I'm able to allow you to speak.
I think, I think maybe we should, you know, explain that, again, if anybody sees the, the agenda, the expenditures are coming from a grant, not from the budget. It's coming from a grant. So I just wanted just to put that out there, and it's, it says, it's, it says it right on the agenda. I just wanted to put that out there.
Does that include the lights?
No, no, not the streetlights, that's not grant money, no. We are.
Hey, if we can state, if, thank you, I appreciate Brian for you, that's what I was going to say. Just leave it till we get to the resolutions, and then anything that you'd like to clarify at that time would be.
I just think of that.
So this way people can have the public comment.
Anything else, right? Is that what you're saying?
What, what's that, trustee Pesante?
Saying, I can't say anything else, right?
No, I did not say that. I said, this is public comment, and we should let the public comment. This is their time to comment.
No, I, I don't get it. It's all for Brian to comment.
No.
No, he told me, he told me.
I asked Brian, I asked Brian, and I said that if you have a comment on the resolutions, that's the time to comment on the resolutions. During the discussion, during the discussion phase of it, every trustee here has the opportunity to discuss it. Public comment is allowed for public comment. If we could let, if we, if we could let the public comment, if you'd like to comment on something, trustee Pesante, please ask, and I will be glad to let you speak.
Please don't mute me, please.
No one's muting you.
Just don't mute me.
Would you, would you, would you like to speak on anything, trustee Pesante?
No, I can't speak. You just told me, let's leave this, no one's allowed to.
I suggested that we wait for the comments during the resolutions. Would you like to, would you like to comment on anything at this point?
I would like to, I would like to comment, do not cut people off when they are speaking, because you're allowed to the Board of Trustees to speak. The rest of them can speak. The moment I speak, you want to cut me off. What is this?
What would you like to speak about, trustee Pesante?
I will speak, continue with the meeting.
Okay, so you have your opportunity, and you keep saying that you're being cut off, but no one is cutting you off. What would you, is there anything you would like to speak about?
Not right now.
Okay, then we will continue with public comment, please, Sharon, thank you.
Carol B., please state your name and address for the record. Carol B., if you could please unmute yourself.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, golly, thank you. All right, so I just want to say, all right, so thank you for those two, well, actually, there are only invoices.
Sorry, sorry, can I ask you to state your name and your address?
My name is Carol Borcheck, Stewart Road, Armont.
Thank you.
I want to thank you for the, those invoices, you know, for the office furniture and that, you know, the stay alert or alert, whatever it was, security alert. But I'm curious, where are the other bids? You know, because most, you know, municipalities get at least three bids for things so they can get the best prices of these items. Secondly, I see some cost for a rug store as well as for the homeworks. Now, I don't see any invoices, I don't see any bids of the particular rug store, the homeworks. And again, where are three bids regarding all those items? Okay, any municipality is supposed to get at least three bids. Okay, so you try to get the best bid, you know, for reach of whatever particular purchases that need to be made. All right, so I'm not seeing any of this. Also, I want to know, why do we need to have another attorney? All right, don't we already have two attorneys with us right now, and possibly even a third? So why do we need to have another attorney work with us? And also, can we see the documentation for the grant work from the DASNY? You know, let's be sure that it's all grants, and it's not just like low, low-interest loans that we're getting from Albany. So where is the documentation, you know, for the, the DASNY? I would like to see that. All of us want to see more documentation in terms of where these figures are coming from? Because again, as been stated by previous taxpayers, you know, we are well over budgeted already, and it's only the third day of January. Okay, so it's very concerning that there's all these costs undocumented that we need to, to really see where all our money is going. Okay, I mean, we deserve answers. And quite frankly, there's a lot of smart, intelligent people that live in this community that could be helpful in terms of pricing, in terms of, you know, various, you know, services that you need. So I think you need to reach out to the, the people in our community for their experience. All right, I feel like you're just, you just, you're choosing who you want to do business with, and that's it. And I think you need to seek out other businesses, other people with experience, and let's get this community going together in a more efficient manner. Thank you.
Thank you. Lori Di Francesco, again, it's not allowing me to, we tried again, it's not allowing me to allow you to speak because of your Zoom connection. Dan Finley, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Dan Finley, and he addresses Over Tam Road, Armont, New York. And just following up on the prior caller's comments, I'll be happy to volunteer myself. I'm very, very good at assessing contracts and get taking bids and doing a comparative analysis. So you guys, you're paying a lot of money to everybody over there. I'm willing to come in and help out. Eight hours a week, no charge. Let me, let me work with the bids, and I'll make sure I get the best deal for everybody in this town.
Beautiful.
Thank you, Mr. Finley, do you have any further comments?
Pardon me?
Do you have any further comment?
Yeah, I, I guess my other comment is, I've spent the last two years listening to the vilification of Phil Giotti and his administration. I think you guys are living off pretty well over the surplus that he left here. And at some point, that money's going to run out, and there's going to be a reality check. And I would just like to know that I'm paying $1,000 a year. I'd like to get maybe one question a year answered for that thousand bucks. So, that's it.
Thank you. Yehudah Zorga, please state your name and address for the record.
Yehudah Zorga, 1 Alpha Lane. Following up, many residents have reached out and asked me about the situation with the traffic study on Cherry Lane, on New County Corner Christmas Hill. If you can update me on that whenever you have an opportunity to do so. I would also like to thank the village for the lights being installed in different locations throughout the village. It's something that many residents, whether walking dogs or walking at night for health reasons, have requested. And many residents actually say that many departments in the village have improved a lot with answering phones, responding to emails, things being processed quickly. So kudos to the board for getting all that done, and a happy holiday season to everyone.
You as well.
Ralph, please state your name and address for the record. Ralph?
He's not, he's muted.
He's able to unmute himself.
Ralph, you have to unmute yourselves.
All right, ready? All right, Ralph, 30 New County Road. I'm trying to resolve a situation that the mayor put me into many months ago by suspending me illegally. He knows it, the people know it. The law, the lawsuit that was filed by me in Article 78 was caused by him alone, nobody else. I've been very upset about what's gone on for the last year. I've been a part of this village as the mayor, as a trustee, as a village clerk. I'm asking the board to look at my documents and review them all, because whatever I submitted was something that basically I'm entitled to by law, because I should be indemnified like everybody else. The mayor should not even be there, he should resign tonight, because he caused the village of Armont a lot of tax money. He knows it, and I know it. I sat with him for many months to try to help him and make it work. Unfortunately, it doesn't work. It's not a lot of money, but I know one thing, you spent a lot of money to try to get rid of me, and it didn't really work, because your attorney said to the courts that my term was up in 2021 of April 5th. And the, and the deputy clerk cut my salary by $3,750 illegally, and I find that inappropriate. I'm asking the board tonight, if you really understand, I've been part of this village from 1986, to work with me and make me understand this. I don't want to be difficult to work with, but the bottom line is, I should be indemnified like everybody else. If one of you people on the board ever gets sued, you want the village to be indemnifying you to get paid for your legal fees. I am not asking. I am not asking for nothing more than what I'm entitled to. It's in the letters. I sent three letters and really quickly. Excuse me?
All right, I just wanted to let you know you have 30 seconds left.
Excuse me, don't interrupt me, please. There's a First Amendment right. I know what I'm allowed to do and the law is five minutes, not three. Better check the records, uh, Becca. Okay, now let me explain some. See, I don't want to be like this, but the point I'm trying to say is that here's a situation that we could actually resolve. I'm not looking to be difficult, but what I'm entitled to, basic.
Your time is up. Thank you for your comment. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Um, Mayor, I don't have anyone else who wants to speak.
Okay, at this point then, we will end public comment.